Good evening. First and foremost, I want to say thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm here today because I was generously invited by Mrs. Maxwell to come speak to you about potentially being the next consultant on the future of Warren Valley Golf Course. Just a brief background, I don't know, I believe I gave you all some, a background, career background of mine. I just want to make sure that you all have that in case you have any questions.
Yes.
Okay. Just a brief background on my career. I have been a golf professional for 21 years. And through that 21 years, I have been a head golf professional at three predominant facilities. I started off in Prescott, Arizona, at Hacienda Golf Club. Then I went to Birmingham Country Club in Birmingham, Michigan. And now I'm currently the head golf professional at Egypt Valley Country Club in Ada, Michigan, which is adjacent to Grand Rapids. Why Egypt Valley is so significant is that it is a 36-hole private facility. So I'm very acclimated to 36 holes and understand the ins and outs of a 36-hole facility. I was born and raised in Allen Park, Michigan. And I went to high school in Allen Park and I went to college at Henry Ford Community College where I played golf at both of those facilities, or at both of those schools. I was fortunate enough to have a very dear friend of mine work at Warren Valley through my high school and college days. So I have to say that I have played numerous, numerous rounds of golf there. So I can honestly say that I actually learned the game of golf at Warren Valley. So when hearing from my friends and even family from Dearborn Heights that the city did buy Warren Valley, I knew that there was an opportunity to possibly help, knowing that the county had it and the struggles that they possibly have had. I went ahead and said, you know, what can I do to help? So I took it upon myself to, this past January, I was able to get a tour of the facility just so I could walk around and see where it, where it's, how it looked today. And after spending about an hour, hour and a half at that facility, I knew that, that there was help needed and that I could possibly help. So what would I do as your consultant? First, I would work with all of you, the council, and establish what kind of culture we want Warren Valley to have. We want to know what we want to be, who we want to be, and who do we want to target. So again, we have to establish that culture. We will also establish a brand, what kind of brand we are. Along with that brand is going to be a logo. With having a new owner as Dearborn Heights, why not have a new logo? A logo obviously is a significant part of the brand. We will also work very hard on establishing a budget and the market on how we're going to advertise to our new brand. Who are we going to advertise to and how much are we going to spend on that? With council as well, our biggest goal that we're going to have is that we're going to be able to set up a five-year master plan on how we're going to prioritize all of our capital expenditures. What are these capital expenditures after this review or after this walkthrough that I had? We're going to have improvements on golf course renovations, golf shop renovations, new fleet of golf carts, ballroom renovations, dining room, kitchen, bar renovations, restroom renovations, clubhouse renovations, to the point where we're able to possibly make a family atmosphere, having patios and fire pits, parking lot renovations, incorporating simulators where we're able to have warm-up stations for golfers to be able to come in since there is no driving range or practice facility at Warren Valley. And also to establish winter leagues in your simulators and obviously to improve our wedding area. Next, I will study and interview all of Warren Valley's competition. In the business that I have, I am able to obviously talk with my peers, fellow golf professionals, and be able to find out what, what things they are doing that are successful and what are not, not successful. So, and they are very upfront on being able to talk about these things so I can talk to the competition in this area. Clubs in interest would be probably Taylor Meadows, Lakes of Taylor. We got Pheasant Run in Canton. So again, those, those are the clubs that I would be targeting. I would also interview current and past customers to see how Warren Valley is viewed in their eyes. I would also be able to ask them, what are, what is Warren Valley doing right? What is Warren Valley doing wrong? And what would they like to see in the future? I would work with the management team in establishing memberships. I believe that this is going to be very important for the success of Warren Valley to be able to produce memberships. Why is this going to be important? Because I feel that if you were able to be able to set a fee for an initiation fee to become a member of Warren Valley because of this culture and this brand that we, that we introduce, we're able to give these, these members, obviously complimentary green fees and cart fees with this upfront money. We're able to give them benefits on merchandise, daily, excuse me, merchandise discounts, league fees, food and beverage, and other opportunities for saving money at the club. Why not be able to give significant perks to Dearborn Heights residents? How can we go ahead and bring the residents involved and make, making it better for them to come to Warren Valley? Hire the right people to carry out this new culture. I don't know how the current management company, I know it is run by a management company, I don't know what we're able to do, but I believe that we have to have the right people in place. I would be able to instruct management employees on the hospitality, which they will be presenting each and every day. Policies and procedures will be established in all departments. We will develop ways that we can, we can be a year-round facility. Most golf facilities believe that once the snow flies that we shut the doors and we do not operate. Well, with Warren Valley and the facility that they do have, why can we not have more golf play, obviously with simulators, food and beverage, having NCAA, NFL games, things like that in bar areas? And why can we not have more weddings and obviously more activities, especially during holiday time? One of the most important things that we would be targeting is basically the bread and butter of Warren Valley, and that's your golf course. I believe that I have one of the greatest superintendents in my back pocket. His name is Jeff Holmes. And if you look at my, my background sheet, you'll see that Jeff Holmes is a dear friend of mine and he is, has agreed that if this does happen, he would be more than happy to provide his services. He would obviously oversee the operations and the conditions of Warren Valley. Here, he will be able to educate you all on what we will need to be done over the five-year master plan. He will be able to, he will be able to look over irrigation, turf conditions, equipment conditions, and all that that is needed to make sure that we have the finest golf course that you can possibly have. Last but not least, I will have a partner of mine. His name is Rob Cardenas, who has managed many fine restaurants in the area, and he would be in control of the food and beverage department. I have talked to many people that have dined and have had activities at your current restaurant at Warren Valley, and they are not very impressed with this. And I think that this would be a major area that we need to improve to obviously increase revenue. What will Rob do? Rob would be able to manage food and beverage costs, create new breakfast, lunch, dinner, and catering menus, capital improvements that will be needed, obviously going into the master plan, educate management on what and who to buy from, setting standards on food prep and presentation, menu pricing, and obviously service standards. With all this said, I know that, like I said, I'm coming in here as a golf professional from Grand Rapids, but I do want to know, or I do all want you to know that in closing, that you all have a very good product that is sitting out at Warren Valley. The biggest thing is that we're starting, you are, you are all starting fresh and you have a designer's name of Donald Ross that is so significant in the area and that if any golf professional or if you do have a product saying that I'm playing a Donald Ross design, that is something that's very special. The thing is, is that I believe that Warren Valley can be so big because I think that you all have an advantage over any other golf course that's in the area. You, we all, you all have 36 holes. Nobody else has 36 holes. What can you do with 36 holes? You can have memberships where members are able to play and also have outings. You're able to then have outings that are going to be bigger than anyone else has the outings. If we can get outings that are going to be 2, 3, 400 people, there's no other place that they can go to but Warren Valley. How can we get these corporate events to this golf course? That's what we need to do. And this is where we're going to be able to have good course conditions, good, good food, good service, and believe me, they will come. So in closing, like I said, I appreciate all of your time. I know this was very brief, but I believe in Warren Valley and I believe that you were smart in making the choice of purchasing this property because it can be big and it can be very successful for, not just you, but your residents.
I'm greatly confused. We met last Wednesday. I thought we didn't want to take a vote, but we did not want a consultant, number one. Number two is, the administration of this golf course is coming through my office, not the council. You need to know the separation of powers. And the fact of the matter is, it would have been nice if you came in and talked to me. I've stopped looking for a consultant after the discussion that last Wednesday. Was I mistaken in my understanding or not? The other thing is, a lot of stuff you talked about is not a possibility because we, we were assigned an operator that was already contractually arranged through Wayne County. So you cannot go over there and start managing inventory and other things. That is the Onata agreement that the city thing. So it would have been nice if you came in and talked to me. I thought we were going to be talking about something else. Kind of insulting in a large extent. I think you should have came in and talked to me first.
Good answer, sir.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I don't know how this was insulting. We've been looking for someone to help us get the golf course up and going. And he came here and gave us his resume and speaking about it. I don't think he insulted anybody by it.
Well, I'm insulted.
Insulted for what?
Man.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
You know, I, I want to thank you for coming, by the way. I thought your presentation, though brief, was very good. You covered a lot of really great points. I understand, Mr. Mayor, what you're saying.
I don't.
Because there's some direction. However, I also recall that the council body asked for three. One, two, three. So there's one that you brought respectfully. We have this gentleman. We also have the person who's already there, Onida. You're right, there is a contract there. But I think this was a good presentation. I think we need to be open to hearing this conversation and having it. So thank you for that. That's all I wanted to say. Because I don't, I kind of feel like this man was just kind of, you know, chastised a little bit. And all due respect, sir, that's not, I apologize for that.
I apologize too.
That should not be the case. Thank you for your time and sharing your knowledge because you have a very impressive resume. And even your business plan that you shared talked about branding and logos and master plan is very good and very appreciated. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Councilwoman Adella.
So obviously the inner workings of the city's got to be worked out. So that's a separate situation. But in terms of yourself, I've been pretty impressed with a lot of things that you had to say. I kind of like your vision. I did have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Number one, have you ever like managed a total golf course from A to Z, like where you're the head? Top honcho at a particular golf?
I am not a general manager. Again, I am a golf professional where I specialize in golf.
Consultant.
Okay. But that's why I was specific in bringing in the two others that are professionals in those departments where I was able to say, I'm giving you the best that there is, Jeff Holmes and Rob Cardenas with obviously agronomic and obviously food and beverage.
Because one of the focuses, one of the focus in this particular golf course, as far as the city's concerned, at least I can speak on my behalf, is we purchased it at an unbelievable price, which is great. And it hasn't been run that successfully. And we had a little bit of a meeting intro, maybe about a week or so back. And, and, and he feels, you know, other reasons is why it hasn't been run that well. But all I look at is the end result. The end result is, it has not been a successful golf course, but I think the potential is so much there, it's not even funny. Because it's a beautiful golf course. There's some things that are challenges, but I think they could definitely be worked on, somebody focused on it the right way. But that's one of the concerns that I want to ask you about. The other thing I want to ask you about, I'm not a golfer personally, so just for full disclosure, Jeff Holmes, you mentioned he's a superintendent. What exactly?
A superintendent is basically, he's the head of grounds. He, he runs everything from A to Z when it comes down to the turf of the facility.
Okay.
So he, he grows it, he feeds it, he does everything. Yes.
And the reason I was asking it, and that's why I kind of thought it probably was, because there is already somebody there. So, and that's why I'm trying to think, because I know we're looking for a consultant. So obviously I presume your, your objective and vision is to be able to work with whoever's already.
Correct. Correct. This gentleman, the protocol is basically that the, Jeff Holmes would actually be calling that person that's in charge of your maintenance, your maintenance department. And he would be saying, Dearborn Heights has asked me to come over and just kind of take a look at things. Not tell them what to do, just give the outline of what has to happen. And then he could come in and give you a report on saying, this is where we're at. This is what, what you need, and this is what you're going to need today, and this is what you're going to need in five years.
And I, and I do like the fact that you did have good experience in a 36-hole golf course, which is, as you mentioned, I mean, I love marketing, so I love the fact that you picked on something that's a gem, which is, and again, as a non-golfer, I don't know that, but it's good that you pointed that out. As a gem, being a 36-hole golf course and how advantageous that is, and how you're going to take advantage of that in terms of marketing, which is good. And the fact that you also have golf there.
Yes, I know that property.
Which is good, because then you have a lot more experience.
Yeah.
Now, not to put you on the spot, but do you live somewhat in the vicinity? I mean, where?
I live in Grand Rapids.
Okay.
I live in Grand, yeah.
Okay. Be kind of a hike, obviously.
But again, like I said, I have family all here. That's the thing. I have family here. My mother and father live in Novi.
Oh.
My sister lives in La Frona.
You have options.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
One more thing. We asked you to come in so you can consult the people that are already there. I don't see what the difference was between this gentleman and the gentleman you brought, Mr. Mayor, because they were both consultants. So I don't understand your, your reasoning behind your insulted. You brought a guy in to give us a price on to consulting. This gentleman came in here to give us consulting. To me, it's the same. I, I'm lost here. And, and bear with me, I'm not, I'm not chastising you for it. I, I'm lost, is what I'm, what I'm saying about the whole deal. And the other thing is, and if you're going to do any consulting, I'm hoping that you would come up with a figure of consulting and a timeline of what it would take to, to go through this. I mean, we're getting real late here. Golf is right around the corner. I mean, people start golfing in April, when the weather starts breaking. So, so that much that we're going to need that if that's the case. But I apologize if anything was miscommunicated here to you, to you. But our deal was that we wanted to hear from more than one person. I liked to hear what he had to say. I did like the other gentleman a lot also. So that being said, I said what I needed to say.
Yeah, I think procedurally, you should have introduced me to him. You should then have come in. We would have explained to you, had you meet our current operator, Onida. And I was looking for three people. And I felt a more organized approach would be to have one night with all three people coming in. I stopped searching after last Wednesday because I, in fact, talked to our city attorney. I, unless I went to a different meeting, but I was led to believe, because Onida said that they were willing to make improvements, but they wanted an establishment that they could be there for a couple of years before he started making investments. So I had, I asked the attorney to be here, and if I was wrong, but to have him see if he could adjust the agreements that would give Onida a certain amount of time in return for them investing in a simulation and other things. Now, if I was wrong, but that's what I thought, and asked Gary to attend tonight, because I thought that's what it was. I had no idea your makeup presentation.
At this point, you're not here to take over Onida's job, right?
No.
He's to compliment them and help them.
Like, like the other guy was.
To market it. He's a marketing person to work hand in hand.
Why didn't you introduce him? Call me up and say, Mayor, could you meet him?
This was last minute, because they, he was...
Well, you know how I feel now. I told you.
Thank you.
I think you made a mistake and you should work with us, not in...
Councilor Chair. Councilman Wenzel.
Yeah, well, thank you for coming out, spending your time here with us tonight. And I don't think we should discourage any kind of input because I know, I never run a golf course, no one on this council has run a golf course, no one in the administration has run a golf course. And it's been said before by the administration that they don't know anything about golf courses. So to get any kind of input, regardless of what it is, is beneficial to us. We appreciate you being here. Now, like, we've never heard of anybody mentioning the branding. That's really important. I have a family member in the advertising business and that's, but they, branding, branding, branding. They stress it all the time. A master plan. I mean, I've never heard of a master plan. You brought that to our attention. No one's ever mentioned that before. I've never seen that. And the Donald Ross, to build on that Donald Ross image, that's outstanding. No one's ever mentioned that. And we knew about it, but no one said, you know, it's what we got to do. And I'm going to apologize if you got the wrong idea. You did not ask to come here. You were asked to come here, right? You didn't, so to do, to get down on you for coming here was a mistake, and we thank you for coming here and giving us any ideas you have.
It was like he was good.
Okay. Councilman Coniston.
I just have one question. How, normally are you paid? Are you an employee?
Yes, I'm a player of the club. Yes, I have a salary at the club. Yes. And again, like I said, I am, I am doing this because I just have a passion for the game. I have a passion for being able to help. And that's obviously why, you know, as a golf professional, as a head golf professional, I've been to those three clubs because each one of those clubs have had those, I like bringing things back to life. And that's where I, I just feel like I can excel in the business because when I got to Egypt, when I got to Egypt Valley, we had 370-some members. Now we have 410, 420. All of our events are sold out, they're filled, things like that, just because we bring things, bringing new things to the, to the, to the, to the club. But more importantly, it's about service. Service, service, service. I mean, because like I said, you're, you're not, you're, you got to bring the people back. So how are we going to do that? And that's majority service. And obviously you have to have a good product, which obviously is your golf course. So that's, those are going to be the two most important things.
So for, with those other golf courses, you were an employee there?
Yes. Yeah, yep. Yeah, I've been an employee. I am not an independent contractor. I am, I am an employee. I'm a golf professional that's paid salary. And like I said, I'm just doing this because I just think that it's important to me and I, I love doing it.
Okay, Councilman Adella.
Mike, so do you have any type of, at least idea, not to put you on the spot, but with the last presenter, he gave us an idea as to how many hours he would need to put in per week and how much his general pay scale would be. Not that that's the ending factor, because the way I look at things, it doesn't matter if we're paid this much as long as you make us this much. So that, that's all fine. But at least to give us a perspective and to have something to be able to compare to. And I, Mr. Mayor, am one of the people that was in favor of seeing a second, maybe even a third person. I see, I see your concern, but I'm, I'm definitely in favor of...
Yeah, if he come in, we would have included him. But to, just to come in and make a presentation, I haven't checked any of your references. I went through all the references for the other people. I don't know who you are.
Yeah. But I would, I'd be interested in knowing, if not now, maybe at least later, roughly the amount of hours that you're looking to put in?
Right.
And what the pay scale is going to be?
Sure.
Because that is a factor based on experience and projected... Look, I, we went, we had a meeting there, was it last Wednesday, Lisa? Lisa, I think it was Wednesday?
It was not really a meeting, it was in...
Not a meeting, I'm sorry, not a meeting. I shouldn't say meeting.
Yeah, because it sounds like it's...
Sit down, try to food, whatever, you looked around. And it's a beautiful golf course. It's, it's definitely not where it needs to be. It definitely needs some, you know, good eyes on it and somebody with a vision, somebody with good marketing. But the bones are there. I mean, the property's a great property. Even though, something that needs a lot of work, where it has a lot of potential, I see, is the hall there. The main, you know, main hall, dining hall. I mean, it has so much potential, it's not even funny. And you mentioned some simulators, and that's one of the things that we had discussions about. So I, I like your vision.
Something, somebody's getting married every week. Somebody, somebody's getting married. You know, so it's like, why can't, you know?
Well, there was some concerns that were discussed, and that was where, you know, the golf course was going to be developed, it was going to be sold, it was not going to be sold, et cetera, et cetera. So a lot of people pulled back from having events there. And that's understandable. But not that we have it, we own it, we are going to be running it as a golf course, as a successful golf course. We need all the resources that we put to, to make it happen, which has that potential.
Just out of curiosity, do you have a timeline or a figure you can share with us tonight? Or?
Well, basically, after talking with the two other gentlemen, the two other gentlemen that'd be working, I feel like we could potentially at, each one of us spending at least 50 hours in there and arrange from anywhere from $13,000 to $15,000 total.
Total. Okay. And the other guy was what, $6,000?
Well, total, but he said by the time he got done, it was right about $13,000, I believe.
Total for all three for the year, correct, combined?
Yes, yeah. And like I said, we would be spending, we feel, we figured that we can get it within 50 hours per person at about $13,000 to $15,000.
50 hours?
Per person.
Councilman Coniston?
Yeah, so you're saying $13,000 to $15,000 for you and the other gentlemen to come in and...
Total.
Total for everybody?
Total.
Everything.
And are you currently employed now somewhere else, or?
Yes, I'm at Warren Valley. Or am I at Warren Valley? I'm sorry.
We're talking about...
I'm at, I'm at Egypt Valley Country Club.
So Eddie, yes?
Yes. Egypt Valley Country Club.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, anybody?
I thank you very kindly for coming. I'm sorry for the...
The city attorney's got a question, if I may. Have you been involved in any sort of pro as a, at a public golf course? Not, not a private?
Yeah, I served as an assistant golf professional at public facilities in Arizona.
Okay, does the public have any comment or questions?
Do you want Gary to work on the suggestion that was made last Wednesday or not, as a group?
Well, I think we all wanted three consultants to come in, and you've got one more.
It's not what I'm talking about.
Well, we got three now.
Two.
Oh, that's right.
Well, we got Onida too, right?
No, not as...
Onida's the actual company. These are consultants that come in and help Onida.
So you need one more.
To be more profitable. And Mayor, you said you had one more person, right?
I got two more leads that I'm working on. So hopefully one of the, one of them, or if both of them, we'll have four people.
That would be great.
Presentations. I'm not going to limit it to three.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just like, I know, I think we said this last time, I just want to clarify this for the audience, so that nobody gets the wrong ideas. Having a consultant is not the next step to have the golf course open. The golf course is open, will be open, and will be running. And the current management team is there and, and will have it up and running. So I don't want, I don't want everybody to get the idea because we're waiting on either either a possibility of another consultant, or hiring a consultant for that matter, to think like, it's not going to be open until we have that consultant. It will be up and running. And it is running right now, as a matter of fact.
Well, I think time is of the essence. We are coming into our golf season, and we want to have the success, this season be the most successful we can. Do you have at least one more person you can bring in right away, Mr. Mayor?
I'm in discussions with two groups.
They can come in. I can have a study session next week, if you like.
If I, if they're available, certainly, but I stopped doing it on Wednesday, because I got the impression that you wanted as a group. Maybe I was wrong, that you wanted Onida to continue.
Yeah, we didn't discuss, we made no decisions at that meeting that we were at.
So, should I have Gary work with Onida, and that he wants to put simulations and other things in there for a two-year agreement?
At this point, I think we need to find a consultant, but I mean, I don't, I don't know. What do you guys think?
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
I was going to say, you don't want to put the cart before the horse. We need to get through the consultant piece first, and then they would advise Onida there on how to move forward, including the simulators. So, therefore, we need to work through this piece first. The council body did ask for three. You can do as many as you like. I do agree, communication, right? Have a study session. Let's discuss this. Again, I think this gentleman did a great job, but if we should entertain all at one time, it's fine. Well, you know, separately bring them in at the same time.
And he, he needs to establish a relationship with the administration, because right now, we have not.
The other thing I want to say, you know, this is consulting. I mean, we already know, he's already talked about golf simulators, that what he would think about bringing in. And Onida said today we're going to have golf simulators, so there's, there's already...
There are an agreement there.
Already an agreement on that part, as far as if do they want to invest in it. So, that part should be a wash. I mean, this is just a consulting on other things, on the greens, the property upkeep, what to do with the, with the banquet facilities. So, I don't see a problem here at all, okay? Of even discussing with Onida about the golf simulators and situations like that. It's just consulting on the whole area. I don't see the conflict there. I may be missing something here, but I just don't see it.
Councilman Adella.
Just, just want to point out, though, I mean, for Mike and the residents, when we did meet with Mike, it wasn't a meeting, just to, just looking over everything, I guess, if you want to call it. I'm sorry, I went with Mike, with Eric. Eric, sorry about that. I, for one, would like to say publicly, honestly, I had a lot of reservations, and I'm just being honest about them, and I told him directly. You know, I had a lot of reservations about them, just based on the way it's been run and the end result. But what I, what I was able to discover during the sit-down with him is a lot of it was, he was kind of handcuffed with being able to do a lot of things because of the situation with the county, and like I said, the, lots of, you know, people weren't sure what was going to happen with the golf course. But he also has a lot of great ideas and great vision for this particular golf course that I think if we allowed him and gave him a chance, maybe working with you, maybe on his own, maybe with possibly other gentlemen the mayor brought, I'm not sure. But I do see, I do want to compliment him in that he had a lot of good ideas that he would like to implement, that I think can take the golf course to the next, next level, and I still have confidence in Eric.
Well, and I can see them working hand in hand, too, because he's got the contacts,